United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I ask that you remain standing for one second? I'm going to switch this moment of silence for a resident of Carver who passed away last spring, and then we'll do the community prayer. I just wanted to read a short statement about her. Donna Carty did volunteer work with Mayflower RSVP, which is now part of Old Colony Elder Services, until physical limitations required that she step back. Donna also helped found the Pine Tree Village Residents Association. She was there literally from the beginning, from their first public meeting to discuss the idea, to being a member of the volunteer board that saw through to the purchase of the village by its residents, to being a member at large on the Board of Directors, to being its secretary, and then to being its president. Donna's commitment to the welfare of others was notable. As a registered nurse, for many years she worked with the elderly, and both physically and mentally, developmentally disabled, until a near fatal heart attack forced her to retire. Donna Carty passed away in May of this year. If we could just have a moment of silence in her memory. Who would like to read the community prayer? Thank you, Bob.
Community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all what we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for the citizens of our community that we have all been allowed to serve and that we may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those in serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Now it's time for citizens' participation. Do we have anyone here tonight who has something to say in this particular section of the agenda? Yes, Mr. Erickson.
Please. Just bring the mic close to you so you can all hear you.
I tell you what, I'll sit that up easier. For those of you that don't know me, which I assume is most everybody in the room, Donna Carty was my wife. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for the moment of silence. She would have hated it because she hated being the center of attention. In fact, she hated it so much, she didn't even like to have birthday parties. But I, having often enough in my life been the center of attention, have no such objections. She would have been very honored, very proud, and I am very, very grateful that she took this moment to remember her. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, and now I have aged dogs to go take care of.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, let's get the right glasses here. Mrs. Ryan.
Yes. I thought you said yes. I thought you said my loss.
Certainly. Yes. And Ms. Sullivan.
Yep. I'm the princess. Hi, Nancy Ryan, three presidents' way. Does she?
Betty Sullivan, 28 Roosevelt Ridge.
Tonight we're going to speak a little bit about our viewpoint coming from seniors. And there's a group of us who have reached out to at least 12 Council on Aging. The COAs included Kingston, Middleborough, who had coffee hours, 8:30 to 10:30; Wareham, Pembroke, East Bridgewater, Duxbury, Norwell, Halifax; Hanover, Rockland, Marion, Rochester. They have opened. They have coffee and muffins. We spoke directly to the directors and all had some form of outside activities. All had continued with the newsletter, which was stopped at our COA. Robo calls and constant contact with seniors was also done in all COAs. It is pitiful that we have to come before the Select Board to be the voice for our friends. Seniors do not need devices. They need interaction with people. One size does not fit all. Ask yourself, if the tables were turned, how would you feel if your loved one was in isolation for over six months with no interaction from people in his or her town? Our time needs to address the emotional and mental health of its seniors. We do not need to hear, "I love the seniors," and do nothing. We know every senior who comes to the COA on a regular basis. We are all in contact with them, and many are lonely. One of the most frequently asked questions is, when is the COA reopening? We tell them we are trying. Seniors only have today. We have been neglected since March. Plans for a future COA are fine, but we're all about now. We love our COA. Where is our equity? The playground has opened. The ball fields have opened. Restaurants have reopened. They're planning on trying to open the school. We need to work with Area 58 to keep the seniors informed. We don't need Zoom, cell phones, or computers. A shout-out to the Select Board. This is the first time a Select Board has taken an interest and hopefully will help us in the future. Sherliffe Park has been mentioned as a gathering place. It's not handicapped accessible. One of the greater fears of seniors is falling. Why not look into grants? What about volunteers? We have done all this work in conjunction with the Board of Health. They are on board as soon as they receive a plan. Betty's going to read.
The DPW and staff will deep-clean sanitize the building and get rid of buses. Use town, school, fire sanitizing equipment. Number two, establish newsletter to include updates for health-issued COVID-19 and triple E., et cetera. Word search covering town info and events. Three, safe seating gathering with social distancing, taped-off markings and signage. Begin opening, limited to 20 people or less to accomplish this. Hours of operation for three days a week approximately. Two and a half hours a day to begin reservations required 48 hours in advance. Coffee, tea, and muffins, light refreshment, social hour. Reservations required 24 to 48 hours in advance. Podiatry, blood pressure checks, and shine by appointment only to allow for scheduling and proper sanitizing between appointments. Hand sanitizing station emphasizes proper hand washing and proper use of face shields and masks. Educate and post-signage on COVID-19 distancing and safety. Ensure that face coverings are worn and properly by all participants and staff. Look into grants, tiers to purchase supplies such as our town, our own sterilizing equipment. More communication, robo calls in addition to newsletter. Use both indoor and outdoor meeting space as appropriate. Explore and provide COVID-safe entertainments and activities. Cribside pickup for hot meals five days a week must have 24 to 48 hours in advance notice for reservations of these meals. Huh? This here? Note, this is stage one opening. More will be added as we proceed and progress. This was put together using current guidelines provided by the Massachusetts Council on Aging in conjunction with Board of Health.
Thank you, ladies. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Town Council is going to provide us with legal update on matters
Good evening. Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to take this opportunity, we just met with the Board in executive session, to talk about some matters of pending litigation that require confidentiality. But, you know, we wanted to meet with you in an open session as well to talk about, you know, some of the things that we've been doing over the course of the past year to show, you know, where your Town Council dollars have gone. And also to provide a refresher as to, you know, how we approach our role as Town Council. You know, you have two new members of the Board plus a new slash old Town Administrator. So we thought it would be an appropriate time to give a bit of an update. So, my name is Greg Corbo. I'm a shareholder with the law firm of KP Law, and my primary responsibility is to coordinate the town's delivery of general legal services. So I handle things like town meeting, open meeting law, public records, conflict of interest, as well as matters involving zoning enforcement, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, all things of that nature. And the other part of our team is Tim Zesson, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Greg mentioned, my name is Tim Zesson. I'm also a shareholder with the firm of KP Law. I've been working with the town on their labor and employment matters for about seven years now. I work closely with the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, and other Town officials, mostly on personnel and labor-related matters. And what that means is, the town has mostly unionized employees, and they're represented by, I think, three or four or five different unions who we negotiate with on a regular basis and we're in contact with. So we're developing that relationship and working with the unions, working with personnel, working with Town officials to make sure that disciplinary and personnel matters are handled appropriately. We also will, from time to time, work on employment-related litigation and related matters with personnel. So I think if Greg did mention already, the lawyers at KP Law provide sort of a team-based approach to resolving conflicts. There's several employees or several attorneys who work hand-in-hand to sort of take a comprehensive approach to resolving the town's issues. And, you know, it's, has been working well for some number of years, but I think the important point to emphasize is that we've been sort of very responsive and have had a very close relationship with Town officials over the years to try to resolve these issues in a prompt and cost-effective way.
Thanks, Tim. Yes, so to elaborate on what Tim said, we do use a small-team approach. So, you know, on my side, the way we do it is I'm what we refer to as your primary point of contact. And so I'll work with, you know, mostly the Town Administrator to have him feed the legal questions or work to me. And then I'll decide, you know, how that work is best done to suit your needs and to get it accomplished in a way that is the most cost-effective for you. So, you know, if it's a matter involving a zoning or a planning board issue, then we have an expert, Amy Questle, who I would ask to handle that matter. If it's a matter involving open meeting law or town meeting, then that's something that I handle myself. If it's something involving public records or police issues, then my colleague, Janelle Austin, would handle that. And, you know, what we try to do, even though we have 40-some-odd lawyers in our office, is we try to have a small team put together for each community so that, you know, you don't feel like you have a revolving door of lawyers that you're dealing with every time an issue comes up. Rather, you know, we try to keep the team small so that you get to know us, we get to know you, and, you know, there's a relationship that can be built up there. So, you know, some of the matters that we've been working on over the past year, we've had three matters of litigation that have been resolved. One was actually a criminal case that involved a former Town employee. The town was not a party to that litigation, but there were some issues relative to the production of records in connection with that litigation. So we represented the town in defending against a motion that was brought in the criminal proceeding. That criminal proceeding eventually was resolved, and then our involvement in that went away. In another matter, we represented the town in an appeal of a decision by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that was a case in which, in a butter, challenged a decision of the zoning board that their neighbor was not required to seek certain zoning relief. We appeared in the case and represented the town's interests, but as we often do in cases like that, we left it to the two private parties to try to work things out amongst themselves. They ultimately did, and the case settled. And then finally, we were involved in a dispute with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection concerning certain reporting surrounding the North Carver landfill and testing for certain contaminants. We worked with the department and negotiated a settlement whereby the town agreed to work with its independent contractor to improve its testing and communication with the residents, and ultimately to extend the public water supply to residents that have been adversely affected by the landfill. Some of the other significant matters that we've been working on, we've been working with the town on solar pilot agreements and disputes with solar companies and property owners as to what should be included in a solar pilot and what should not, and whether and to what extent sold properties that have solar on them can still qualify for certain other types of tax exemptions for agricultural and farmland. We've been assisting the town in negotiating with Comcast for a renewal of its license to provide cable services in the town. We've also worked on several significant public records requests involving requests for thousands of documents. We've worked with the Clerk's Office and other Town officials to resolve those requests, and we are currently working with American Tower to secure agreements for the town's public safety equipment on some of the radio towers in town. So that's just an example of some of the things that we've been working on and that we will continue to work on for the town. So, you know, that's a general overview. Are there any questions that you'd like us to address at this time?
So, anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Bob. If you need anything, we're always here.
Thank you. Mr. Lefan, you're up.
I didn't mean to ignore you, Mr. Counsel.
Rick, you're going to have to really speak into the mic.
Okay. Yes, a few items for the Board tonight for an update. Number one, I was asked to consider the situation we have with Town Bylaw 4.3.7, which provides for the eligibility of members to be on the Finance Committee. Having read the section, I think Sarah and I had a little bit of a give-and-take as to how one interprets that. I'm sorry?
You're going to have to speak into the microphone more, Rick. I'm sorry.
Is that better?
Yeah. Just be closer to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Having had some back and forth with Sarah on this item, I think it's a little bit, the language is a little bit unclear to me. You know, back in the day, my prior experience here, I think there was a particular practice. I don't think that's, has been the same practice, but interpreting this language is not exactly easy. One could maybe interpret the spirit of it, but the language wasn't extremely clear to me. So after some conversation, I suggested that I asked Town Counsel for his opinion, and his opinion is essentially agrees with that exposed by Sarah, that effectively means that if a member is on the Finance Committee, that they really, they should not be serving on any other board or committee simultaneously. So what does that mean? I don't know what that means at this point. We do have a number of people who are serving on multiple boards, who are part of the Finance Committee, and certainly I respect their service. Would in no way wish to seek for those, that service to be terminated. That is not the point. This is not supposed to be, you know, the plan is not to halt people's service or their, what they give to the town, but effectively, it would mean at some point going forward, have to find an appropriate remedy over some period of time to get back to the practice that we used to have. As I said, I think this isn't a situation that takes care of itself immediately, but I do think it's something that we have to gravitate back towards over some period of time, as we do have a number of people, and we have some tonight, who do serve in multiple capacities. So it's really as simple as that. I don't know if Greg wishes to expound upon the advice that he gave me.
Before you do, let me just add to this, just for your information, this came up because it's been kind of an issue that's been discussed, background noise, for quite some time. Jen, you and I talked about it before you were even elected, just multiple people on multiple boards, committees, commissions, not for or against that, just talking about it, what's allowed, what isn't, what shouldn't be. And so this one was just first, you know? And Greg, I would like to hear, not just because you agreed with me, but I'd like to hear what your opinion was on this.
Yes, thank you through you, Madam Chair. And, you know, certainly I have no position on the policy behind this particular bylaw or, you know, whether individuals should be permitted to serve on the Finance Committee as well as on other boards and commissions at the same time. But, you know, I've looked at the language used, and, you know, I've looked at it in terms of precedents that have been established in court cases and in other communities, and it is my opinion that the bylaw as written would prohibit most people who have some capacity with the town as being able to participate on the Finance Committee. So the language at issue specifically says that, "Any registered voter of the town shall be eligible for appointment to the Finance Committee or Council on Aging, except that no elected or appointed Town Officer or regular Town Employee," excuse me, "or person holding a position of financial responsibility for the town shall be eligible for membership in such agency." So the question really comes down to, you know, what is a Town Officer? And under the precedent of the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court, a Town Officer is considered any individual whose position is established by law. As distinguished from individuals who serve on ad hoc committees or more informal advisory roles, a position established by law is one that has official responsibilities to the town, either by the town's bylaws or the general laws. So positions such as Select Board Member, Conservation Commission Member, Planning Board Member, Police Chief, these are all positions that have their roots in either the general laws or the bylaws of the town, as opposed to, say, you know, a Town Administrator's Search Committee or a Bylaw Review Committee that, you know, is appointed by a board or a public official merely to provide advice on a more informal basis. So, you know, in my opinion, based on the way that this provision is written and the fact that it points out several different categories, elected or appointed Town Officer or regular Town Employee or person holding a position of financial responsibility, the use of the words "or" in between each of those positions signifies that it's intended to apply to all of those types of officials. And so, you know, it's my opinion that anyone holding one of those offices would not be entitled to appointment to the position of Finance Committee. You know, the question that you have in front of you then becomes, well, what do we do if we have people who are currently members of the Finance Committee and hold these positions? And, you know, this is a position that is appointed by the Town Administrator in consultation with the Chair of the Finance Committee and the Town Moderator, and it's something that he has discretion over. And, you know, certainly in exercising that discretion, you know, something he should and can consider is, you know, what is the custom of the town with respect to the way that this bylaw has been applied over the years? And, you know, what is the fairness to individuals who were appointed for a term to continue on in that term? And, you know, how does it benefit or harm the town if, you know, individuals are permitted to continue serving until the ends of their terms? And, you know, that's something that, you know, again, really does implicate policy, and, you know, that's going to be up to the Town Administrator, sorry, Rick, to have to ultimately make that decision.
Any other good news tonight, Counsel?
That you've heard enough.
So that's how it came about. As you can see, I asked Greg for his insight input, and where we go from here, I think prospectively is the way to look at this. And I just wouldn't want anyone to feel in any way that their service is not respected by, certainly by me, especially knowing how difficult it is to get people to volunteer for boards and committees. So that's as far as I can go this evening, but I think just to give the Board some information on this subject. And again, I'm happy to take any input from any members, their feelings, members of the Finance Committee, whomever. My door is open. Please give me a call. Come talk to me, and we will find the best approach.
Mr. Lefan?
Yes, sir.
If I could, I guess my only comment would be, if the will of the town is to have no member of the Finance Committee serve on any other boards or committees, that language is a little hard, I think, for the average person to read. We might want to look at the Capitol Outlay Bylaw 4.7.1. It has a simple one sentence. Unless otherwise provided, no member may also be a member of any other committee, board, or commission. That might be something we might want to look.
Right. That does seem a lot clearer, doesn't it? Yes, I would agree. I think maybe that's something, whenever our next town meeting happens to be our next annual town meeting, it would be good to clear it up. We shouldn't need a legal opinion over such things. Right. So, no offense, Greg, but...
None taken.
Mr. Belton.
So...
So, I like people in our town to be able to serve our town, okay? I was not in favor of the bylaw that restricted town employees from being a selectmen. After that one came in, I think this came in very soon afterwards, or at the same time for this bylaw, but I left my position in the emergency management agency after that selectmen bylaw came in. It was clear why they wanted this, that bylaw. And this one here also does limit some residents severely from being part of this, the Finance Committee, or the Council on Aging at that point, which actually may have a benefit, actually, it does, it will have a benefit to our town. So clearly, this bylaw is gonna need to be changed to limit. I do agree that people that have a position of financial responsibility for the town, that they should be not on the Finance Committee, because I think it would be a conflict of interest. But we really have to have a hard look at some of our bylaws and the reason why they were created, the way they were created. And I agree, I think we need a bylaw committee to really go through some of these bylaws and have a clear understanding.
I agree, Mr. Belvin.
I do think this particular bylaw goes back at least till the mid-'90s.
Yes, this is a very old bylaw.
This is an old one, yes.
And I'd like to point out that pretty much every committee in town, board or commission, has a budget. And so I think that's the issue. As Mr. Corba pointed out, though, I mean, an ad hoc committee or an advisory committee, they're not gonna have a budget. And so that's, for this particular committee that we're talking about, that's kind of the issue in my book. You know, you can't serve on one committee or commission or board where you have a budget, and then you approve the budget on the Finance Committee. You see what I'm saying? So...
Well, again, to me, it's something to think about prospectively, and I'm not here to rattle the cage or anything else. So please, I seek anybody's input on perhaps the best way to move forward. I think I've said enough.
Mr. Hoffman?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Speak into the mic, Jen.
I just had a quick question.
Hold the mic for her.
Can you hear me now?
Some people at home we're worried about.
Okay. On, Sarah, you just mentioned that earlier you talked with Jen about some other bylaws. Are we just looking at the finance, eligibility to be on the Finance Committee at this time?
That's all that's on the agenda. It just came up, as I said, because it sort of morphed into this conversation that Rick and I were having. It came, started with a more general one, and then it moved to this one specifically. But there, you know, there are a lot of other questions out there. Should someone, you know, there are other questions, but we'll get to them on another day.
Okay. I just didn't know if that's in the plan to look at all, just not the Finance Committee?
Oh, yes. I think that was sort of the goal.
Because I guess the thing that has me confused is our first meeting as the new board, we appointed a present Finance Committee member to a board. So we knew...
It's a puzzle.
Right. So we kind of knew about it. I'm just wondering, why is it being brought up now when the board unanimously approved a reappointment of someone on that first meeting? So I'm just trying to get a little timeline on this, and just to get it straight in my own head, that's all.
I don't think that, in my opinion, I'm not sure there's any malice in putting this up. I know that things pop up in our heads all the time. Something I think of next month may have been something to deal with now, and I just didn't think of it. But to your point, I think other committees have to be talked about. You'll see in member notes section, I actually bring up a different bylaw to try to clear up some ambiguity in the future. So this isn't a one and done case. I had thought of something else, too. So I think things just have to be looked at, and you come across stuff, and you want to deal with it. So I would hope that you don't think there's some sort of malice in it, stuff just comes up.
I'm just asking a simple question. Why was it brought up now? And everybody just kind of, nobody knows. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Do I have a point of information, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, this is not a public discussion. It's a public meeting. I'm sorry, this is a business meeting, Mr. Jermaine. Mr. Lefan, would you want to continue?
Yes. The next matter I have here is the library reopening conversation we've had this past week, or, well, last week, with Carol Julius and Elaine Kevin. We've had some conversations internally about, with how to go about the reopening of the library. You may be aware that there are some other libraries in the area that are beginning to slowly reopen. This library, we probably know, we opened yesterday. It's some limited capacity. I have provided you in my update, the bullet points on how it is going to be working in the short term. Would you like me to read them, or it's up to you?
I think that would be good.
Very good. Okay.
Mr. Administrator through you, Madam Chair, do you need me to stay for any of the rest of the agenda?
I, I'm sorry, Greg, I should have said, I don't think so, Rick, unless you know some reason. Okay. I guess not. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thanks for having me. Have a good night, everyone.
He's done enough tonight.
You don't want to stay and listen in?
It sounds riveting.
All right. So, yes, Madam Chair, after our conversation, we had determined that the library would begin, would be open yesterday, this past Monday, from 10:00 a.m. till 4:00 p.m. I'm sorry, Mondays from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and Wednesdays from 10:00 until 6:00 p.m. The curbside pickup will be available on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. All patrons will enter through the right-hand door on Meadow Brookway, and will exit through the left-hand door on Meadow Brookway. On the days that library is open, only seniors will be admitted from 10:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. You have to have your ID available to prove you're senior. On the days that the library is, I'm sorry, there will be a limit of 10 people or family unit in the building at one time. So patrons may not spend more than one hour in the library per day. Computers must be reserved in advance and will be limited to 30 minutes per day. Masks are required for patrons at all times and staff when in the public areas of the library. Table will be placed on the floor for directions to provide marks for social distancing at the circulation desk. Computers, work areas, door handles, and other high-touch surfaces will be sanitized throughout the day by the custodial staff. Chairs will be removed from some areas in order to maintain social distancing. Returns will be via book drop only and will be quarantined for 72 hours. Hand sanitizers will be in place throughout the building. The bathrooms will remain closed to the public. As you can imagine, restrooms present a particular problem in terms of maintaining those, keeping those clean, and so unfortunately, that was a little bit of the debate we had as to whether or not that would be appropriate. So this is in force at the moment, and this should be on the website if not already. They will be up in the very near future so that people can see. I think we're all, I'm pretty impressed by the amount of volume that library has been doing even while it's closed. Think it has stacked up well with our neighbors. So if there's any questions, give us a call, send us an email, and...
Mr. Belvin?
Mr. Lefan?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Is that, why wasn't this put out to the public of how this process was gonna be done, we're just finding out this now, that we should have known about this weeks ahead of time before it was actually gonna come in place and to be open, the library, for the public to know that there's a process going forward? That's my question about, it's great that it's open and fine, I have no problem with it, there's a process in place. I just wish there was more communication prior to just finding this out now.
Well, that's a fair point. I will say, though, that to the extent that the guidance from the state has not been particularly forthcoming, reacting to that and trying to work in abide, abide by that guidance from the state, reaction tends to be more, we'll say quicker than we would like. You know, we have, you don't have necessarily the time to plan two or three weeks out. You react to what is provided to us and try to get up and running as quickly as possible. So it has not been a perfect situation, Bob, I would agree, but I think under the circumstances, we're trying to do the best we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Council on Aging, that building, we had a meeting this past Thursday downstairs here, where the Council on Aging met. Some of us were in attendance. I was there. Sarah was there. Dan? I think Dan was there, too. After that, well, during that discussion, it was determined that, that opening the building at the moment to the public is not, we're not there yet. As far as some of the services, one of the key elements here is we determine that it would be best to bring back our activities coordinator ASAP. So her, her job was returned, we'll say unfurloughed to its full capacity this, yesterday. In the meantime, there are some services that we, that some have been offering. One of the things that we're gonna, instituting is a grab-and-go meal service on, twice a week, and that's Tuesdays and Thursdays. And there's a pickup time would be between 11:00 and 12:00. That's something you should be calling in advance, though, to schedule those. It's not just show up and grab a meal.
Did you say Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Tuesdays and Thursdays, correct. And that would be between 11:00 and 12:00. Once again, you need to be contacting the COA in advance to plan for that. As I mentioned, bringing the activities coordinator back, that's probably the most critical piece here. Exploring, working with local cable to provide programs online, and to assist with some of the information, getting it out to the public, and perhaps working with some of our neighboring communities, you know, to, I don't want to use the word steel, but kind of use, use the efforts of each community in terms of broadcasting whatever programs that we have done, and the, not just the, what Area 58 region, but even maybe beyond that, what other communities are able to do with online, online and cable broadcasts.
And Rick, if I could interrupt you here for a second, I know we also talked about, we did talk about having online programming, but we also talked about having programming at the Area 58 studio.
Okay.
So that people who don't have a computer, don't want to have a computer, whatever, can still have some kind of programming. And, just wanted to throw that out there.
And the outreach worker is working from home. We hear from Carol and the members of the COA, that seems to be working very well at the moment still, and that's gonna continue in force. The position is working at its current, as its previous level in terms of its service to the town, in terms of hours. So that's not an issue in terms of restoring hours. Meals and Wheels will be maintained at status quo, and the utilization of that has been up substantially since March, as it is from about approximately 35 to approximately 55 meals. The GATR service is, will be maintained at status quo, but again, the building remains closed currently due to safety of staff and patrons. The members of the COA did bring up a very good point a little bit earlier in terms of some of the needs of the clientele are, you know, not simply a matter of a building, and some of the social elements that have definitely been lost during this time, those are very difficult to recreate without some, you know, a little bit of creativity. So leaving the meeting, we did discuss that there needs to be some effort between the director, I know Sarah had raised her hand to help maybe work to create some social opportunities during the days for seniors to attend. You know, going back to the issue of the building, there are a lot of challenges, you know, and the Board of Health, I did speak to the health agent this afternoon, you know, and they're gonna want some significant plans in order to be willing to open the building or allow the building to be opened. And some of the, you know, maintaining the cleanliness of these facilities is very, very difficult under the circumstances, particularly, you know, as we mentioned restroom facilities. How do you deal with restroom facilities? So in the meantime, you know, at least trying to create opportunities and events outside of the building for seniors that, I don't want to use the word alleviate, but it can help get around some of those, those challenges, would be a good start. So that is what we left the meeting with last Thursday evening. Would you agree with that?
Yeah.
Reasonably accurate?
And I believe we also discussed...
That's not what we discussed?
We also discussed having social events in places like Shirtlift Park, Town Hall.
Right, other places, correct. So, okay. Yes, the newsletter. Yes, the newsletter we did discuss. That's, you know about that. The newsletter's coming back.
Oh, my God, the newsletter.
Okay. So, so that's basically where we are in general with regard to the COA at the moment. So...
Mr. Lefan, I just have one question. You know, we've been in this situation for a while now, and I understand it evolves on a regular basis, but it seems to me we've had quite a while to sort of come up with a plan on how to disinfect the restrooms and how to sort of do a staged reopening. And I'm just wondering what's taken so long?
Well, I guess it's hard for me to answer that. Mark, I will say that, you know, there hasn't been, I mean, obviously, there hasn't been any specific guidance from the Commonwealth with regard to Council on COAs. There has been specific guidance with regard to libraries. So we really haven't had, we haven't had the guidance from the state to know how the best, to best go about this. The board, local Board of Health have not had advice from the state as to how to go about, you know, reviewing, creating and reviewing plans. So it is a little bit of a different animal than some of your other municipal facilities. So that has been part of the challenge.
There's no guidance that says they can't open, correct?
There's no guidance period on the mass.gov website about Council on Aging.
Is there anything to stop them from opening right now?
Well, I think the Board of Health, I think the answer is yes. I mean, there has to be some specific plans.
But if there was a plan that was acceptable to Board of Health, then the Council on Aging could open?
This is the plan we would give to Board of Health.
Please?
Excuse me, this is a business meeting.
And I don't, I don't want to, I mean, I think, I like to think that we've been working well. I know, I think I, we've had a, I think, developing a very good working rapport here to try to get, moving in the right direction. You know, what I discussed, this is what came of, out of our meeting last Thursday. It doesn't mean it's the end. I did have, as I said, did have conversations with the health agent just this afternoon, and his attitude, well, not attitude, he said, you know, they do need some specific plan to be submitted for them to review. It doesn't mean that there's something that's gonna be approved. It just means there has to be some plan for them to look at. And I think the plan, and then again, we'll have to work on this. I'm not saying, you know, I think the plan has to be more specific and definitive in terms of, you know, floor plans. Where are we putting people? Not, you know, six people here. Where are we putting people if we're gonna hold what types of events? So it's, I think it's a level of detail that we haven't, you know, with the lack of guidance, we just haven't really been able to get to yet. And in reality, you know, if you, and I know that, you know, I've done some homework. I know others have done some homework in terms of what COAs around the region are doing, and very, very few are using their buildings at the moment for some of the reasons we've already discussed. There are services, but they're not using, you know, the inside, internal buildings to offer services at the moment.
I understand it's an evolving process, and I'm not trying to be negative toward anyone here. I just, I think even if we had to use, utilize some outdoor spaces in connection with some indoor spaces, just to create some more spacing, maybe there might be some opportunities for that. That's all. And I know we had some of the sanitizing companies for a while that were coming into the police station and the fire station. Maybe if we reached out to them, maybe they might be willing to come into the COA as well, and maybe that's an opportunity we could look for. So just a couple of thoughts.
Absolutely.
Mr. Belvin?
I, too, echo the same amount, Mark, of, I'll just say a criticism of what has been happening over the past months, and to create a opening plan, and how long does it, does it take to create an opening plan? Some of this is common sense to open it up and to make sure that people understand what's gonna be required of them to come into the facility, and what's required of us to maintain that facility. And cleanliness is a big part of that. I think it can be done. It's been happening already. If people can go to restaurants now and have other opportunities to interact. And there are groups of people within our town that have created their own outside... town that have created their own outside activities where they come in and talk to each other, and, 'cause with senior citizens, socialization's extremely important to their mental health, and I think that's kind of been sidetracked on this, and I see it in the hospital, but also to turn around and, and talk to people, and listen to what they're going through, and it's not just the few people that I talk to over here at the Town Hall, it's throughout our town. So we, we need to turn around and do something for our seniors. We need to start acting, and we need to turn around and make sure that they're getting what they should be getting from our town. It's, and it's been months, and, and I think that we need that information to put out there to let people know this is what's gonna be done, and I kinda wish things were ramped up during this time of more going after grants, or, or looking at alternatives, or talk to other Council on Agings, all right, to look at alternatives out there of how other places are doing it. I think the town should've done that, and, and I don't see that happening, and I thank the, the lady for coming up there and speaking.
If I could just quickly, Madam Chair, first of all, I would say that the town, through my office, has been doing that. I'm in contact with my peers, thirty-plus peers in the region, every week on these things, so Carver is at or above some of the services that most are offering. I will also say that, you know, you know, my goal, and I know the board's goal, is for us to be moving together in a positive way to make, get as much service as we can, as soon as we can. I thought we had a good meeting the other night with the COA, I think we have some good advocacy on the COA now, and I think we're in a, as good a position as we have been for some time, perhaps, to progress a little more aggressively, so shall, shall I leave it at that, at the moment?
That's fine, thank you, I, I-
Thank you.
Can I contribute, too?
Mrs. Bogart?
Um, yeah, I, I, I agree with, with Bob and Mark, I think this should speed up. Town Hall reopened, look, the library reopened yesterday with these pretty specific guidelines, and as a parent of a school-aged child, we're going through figuring out how to open the school a couple of days a week, too, and I'm part of the parent advisory group there, so I've been involved in the process and the discussions and stuff, and what we were given tonight is this unreasonable? To me, this stuff seems very reasonable, and a lot of these same items seem to be similar to what was in the library, maybe if bathrooms are such an issue, maybe we keep the bathrooms at the Council on Aging closed. You know, the library is asking for a limit of, you know, it's open for, you can be there for one hour a day, and you need reservations, and it seems similar, so I don't see why achieving something like this can't happen a lot sooner. I just, I don't see it being unreasonable at all. So what can we do to make something happen sooner, rather than, okay, we need to, we need to develop a stronger plan to start? What can we as a board do to make sure that's happening? Because I don't see a problem.
Well, I'm certainly going to be working closely with Kevin Fogg to get, you know, to see what they do need in order to issue, issue is a strong word, but to allow for some phased reopening, so obviously with Carol and whomever else the COA wishes to designate to help with that, so that's something we can be working on immediately. But I will say, though, just, while I agree with your sentiments, that, I mean, this, this is something that everybody's being careful with. Carver is not being paranoid, okay? That doesn't mean we shouldn't be more aggressive, but we are not being paranoid, but we are doing as much or more than almost every town out there. There are some towns that their town halls are still closed, this is how, is that extreme in my opinion? Yes, it is extreme, but there are many communities that, you know, that are, you know, by appointment only in their town halls, so is it for me to say that there may be a degree of paranoia? Probably not my call, I think that's for the public officials in each town to make that call, but, but I appreciate the sentiments, and I know, as I mentioned, that we, we have a, I think, a good group of people on the COA, and internally who wanna make this move fast, and we will, we will do that, Jen, I promise you.
And just for the record, Kevin Fogg is the health agent.
Yeah, oh, yes.
So you had said you had to include him, but what about the Board of Health, Art Borden, Barry Talan-
Well, Kevin Fogg is, is the health agent, is the person who, you know, does the-
Right, but, but I would, I would assume the Board of Health would, would wanna be involved and, and be a-
Well, you know, I'm not, well, it could be, I don't, I'm not gonna tell the Board of Health and their agent how to interact among themselves. I did speak briefly today with Kevin and the chairman of the Board of Health about this issue, so.
How does the Board of Health, the, the chairman, how does he feel?
Well, his, and again, I'm always uncomfortable expressing sentiments to people who I did not get permission to do that from, but his, the general thought was that, you know, they need a specific plan, they're not, they're not in favor of, they're not opposed, but they need a specific plan for them to review and consider. So what level of detail? That's something, I'm happy to speak to Kevin with tomorrow, keeping in mind that the information presented tonight by the members of the COA, that was, this is the, this is the first I've seen of it. Was, was that on the table the other night, please?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm watching all the-
Okay, so that was part of the discussion Thursday night, and what came out of that discussion is what I have reported to you, so.
So perhaps you can show this plan that they submitted to us tonight-
I'd be happy to, yes.
To the health agent.
Right, right.
Ms. Huenz?
Mr. Townsend?
Could I just ask, Rick, since we have a bit of a time elapsed between tonight's meeting and our next meeting, could you perhaps send the board weekly updates, say, where we are?
I would be happy to do that, yes.
Thank you, that would be great.
Right. And again, I, I just wanna make it clear here that, you know, this, this is, this caution is real, okay? It's for the right reasons, you know, where we are dealing with a, you know, a high-risk population, that does change the dynamics a bit here, but it seemed clear to me after last Thursday that we are all working together here, and I wouldn't want there to be a perception that that's not the case, so.
I don't think any of us are advocating that we do anything haphazardly or dangerous or, or rushed. I just think we, we do the best we can.
Sure.
Mr. Huff?
I just had a quick question, so the health agent and the Board of Health, so let's, let's say we come up with a plan, everybody working together, 'cause obviously we all want the same thing, we all want the COA and the citizens to be, have some activity. So is it the health agent and the Board of Health, or does the health agent can approve this plan?
Well...
The health agent works at the direction of the Board of-
Yeah, I don't know the interaction, how they conduct them, their business, you know, I know in some places the health agent, you know, is authorized either, you know, by vote or simply by custom, you know, to be the person who would approve such things. I don't know, I don't know fundamentally what that relationship is between, you know, the health agent here and the Board of Health, if the Board of Health wants to have final approval, but when something is submitted, the, a board will, will defer, will usually defer to the technical review by their professional that they hire, so, you know, so the Board of Health is going to rely upon the health agent's, you know, recommendations in making any decision. So I, you know, from my perspective, I work with the, the technical person who is gonna be advising them, because the goal is obviously to have the Board of Health be willing to approve something, either passively or affirmatively, as soon as possible, so they're gonna look to their technical person, you know, for, rather than trying to call special meeting after special meeting, emergency meeting, that, that's not how to do business, and that's not productive, so trying to work through Kevin as, in a more, in an expeditious fashion is how the, is how the Board of Health is gonna reach their conclusion, I'm fairly confident.
So how the library got reopened, the, the procedure for that?
I'm sorry?
So how the library got reopened, as you said, yesterday, right?
Yes.
So, so to get the Council on Aging building to open, would we follow the same procedure of that as far as having the plan, was that presented to the Board of Health?
I have not presented any plan to the Board of Health specifically, no, I have the information that came this evening.
I'm saying for the library, for the library to open.
That was approved basically by the health agent.
Okay.
Yes, no, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I, I was missing your point, Jim, I'm, thank you, yes, I'm with you now.
I'm trying to compare the two, where we, we have the library open now, maybe the next thing we should work on is the COA to get open.
Absolutely.
And so whatever the procedure we did for that, let's try to do that.
Yeah, and again, I-
I'm sorry, Mrs. Ryan, I, I'm just not allowing discussion outside of this business meeting.
As I said, Mr. LaFawn, you will show these to the health agent.
Absolutely, no, and I'll be happy to-
Thank you.
Talk to you tomorrow, Nancy, too, if you, I'll be happy to talk to you tomorrow, too. I'm sorry? I'm, I'm, I'm calling you-
Mr. Balbin?
No, no, I just, I just wanna make sure that people understand that this is a business meeting, and if you wanna talk to us after the fact, that's fine.
Sure.
All right, just so we can keep moving this along, okay?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Nope, and, and-
No, I'm sorry, Mrs. Feran, we, we're not- Can you, can you tell Mr. LaFawn tomorrow? Thank you.
Yeah, like I say, I'm, my door's open, my phone's, and some of you are not bashful, and I appreciate that, so I'm very happy to, yeah, again, I know this is a little bit of a, you know, there's a lot of emotion about this for the right reasons, so, but I think if we all stay on the same page together, we'll do fine.
Can't agree.
One last point, too. I know that you said there's paranoia, no one wants to open it prematurely, and we wanna do it safely, kinda goes without saying, but I feel like it has to be said, the seniors are grownups, they can decide for themselves if they wanna go or not. If they feel safe with the way it's open, they can go, if, if not, so be it, so I don't think that we should hold this up to make sure, like, it's a completely, like, I don't have the right words, but they're grownups, they can make up their minds, so let's get it open, safely but open.
No, and, and again, I respect that, Jen, I would just caution that, you know, the town does have a, you know, there's, the town has liability in almost everything we do, so we, so we, we just, we just wanna be as cautious as we feel we need to be for those purposes, too, so, but, yes.
Next, next topic.
Yeah, I would, just very quickly, the, we do have instituting a, a review of our planning, the permitting department, that's actually gonna begin tomorrow, we have a, a human services consultant coming in to evaluate the roles, responsibilities, workflow, to help, to see if we are most efficiently servicing the boards and the needs of all those boards and operations downstairs. This is a relatively low-cost effort, this is only about $3,000, but we're hoping that this is at the, an effort that is, I think, welcomed by all, both, you know, the employees, the department heads, et cetera, to see if we can help identify issues, concerns, improvements, et cetera. Municipal playground complex, and I'm really gonna throw Elena under the bus on this one, and, now, we, we do have a certified inspector who has been assigned to come down and do a final inspection, so, it was actually some-
She's already done.
How can I throw you under the bus? Okay, do we have a report yet?
She's, she just came down, she's working on her-
Thank you.
Okay.
I retract my criticism of our assistant town administrator. And finally, a small initiative that, that I wanna say I have started, but with some input, I know Stephen Gray and Police Chief were involved in this conversation, of creating a small, a non-intensive, time, time-intensive effort, little advisory committee to, to rework with our police department, analyze with our police department, different issues, practices, policies, that have arisen from what's going on in the United States today, with terms of racial tension and domestic issues, et cetera. This wasn't my initiation, but boy, this is, I think this is a really good idea, trying to get out, I know there are some communities that have started some sort of, I think, more grandiose efforts, I think this is intended to be more of a small, small-town effort to work with our police department, to determine what ways could, you know, that we can best educate the community on some of the pressures that they deal with, some of the laws they have to work with. There's just a lot of misunderstanding, and don't think for a moment that Carver isn't anyways, in many ways, isn't any different than anywhere else in America right now, so I think it's a really nice idea, a nice opportunity to kinda get out, you know, it may be overused, but get out in front of the issue a little bit and have some positive conversation. I did provide you with the mission statement that a couple of us had come up with, including and with the approval of our police chief, and I'll read it to you quickly, and then I will hopefully be done for most of the night here. The mission statement is to recommend and advocate to police department administration and town officials improvements relative to practices and policies concerning race, implicit bias, addiction, mental health, domestic issues, and homelessness. The committee will strive for a frank but non-adversarial dialogue with the police department in the hope of achieving, achieving, achieving by, and, this is a really bad, poorly written here, I'm sorry. Effort will, will be focused on promoting understanding between local police officers, Carver residents, improving delivery of service accountability, and reducing risk to both officers and those they encounter. Law enforcement training techniques and challenges confronting police officers and the performance of their duties will be examined, and the advisory group may research best practices and other, from other jurisdictions nationwide. And the recommendations of the committee will be by vote and reported to the Board of Select, Select Board when it's convenient. So again, I, this was, some of the ideas that I know Chief Doofly had were rather quite, quite interesting, too, I'm not gonna discuss those, but I think there's, there's a sense that this could, this could be a very helpful, helpful thing for the community, not intended to be a one-year or two-year, you know, effort, more of a, you know, several months and see where it takes us. So I do have some volunteers for that in line, so.
And you are intending to also add a, potentially a Board of Health member?
I, somebody has expressed some interest, yes.
Great, that's fine.
Yes.
Ms. Huenz?
Mr. Townsend?
I just wanna say, I think this is a really good idea, and I, I applaud you putting it together, I think it's a great idea.
Well, thank you, and I, this is a situation where you, someone provides a good idea and you completely steal it.
Absolutely.
I've tried to be as, you know, deferential as I can, but if this works, I'm gonna take it, so, thank you.
Please pass my, please pass my thoughts on to whoever created the idea.
I will do that, yes, I will, okay.
Mr. Balbin?
We all know him quite well.
So some formalities with this is that, who's part of this citizen police advisory committee? Do we already have a makeup of this?
It's, I'm sorry, it's in the, on-
Yeah, there's, there's a proposed makeup, yes.
You go to one of Rick's memos.
Put together people together, too.
And I gotta scroll through this then. Actually, I think I did see that. But, that being said, I, I think this is really good, I was actually told of an issue that happened a couple of years ago, and it wasn't about our police officers, but another resident and a resident, and it quite concerned me about this, and so I think this committee would help out a lot, to bring in the community, let them talk and, and let them know how they feel.
I think it's good, good for people, people don't understand, and why would you, you know, police techniques, you know, we see what the horror we've seen on television, but, and I know some of that, I mean, our local police are, are just horrified themselves, this is their profession, this is what they've given their lives to, you know, and, you know, at great risk to themselves and their family, and, you know, so I think to the extent that, you know, anybody, you know, is left with an impression that this, you know, what you see is how police departments operate, that's not true, I think we all know that intuitively, but I think just some of that, you know, learning, education, I, I just think it's, it's a good thing, and I, I think it becomes as good as the people who serve and how far they wish to, how, take this. I think the, Chief Doofly couldn't be more accommodating, I think you know, not just on this, but in other areas, and I think to the extent that there can be a really good interaction between him, other members of the department, the public, it, it can't be bad, we'll put it that way, so.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bogart?
You had said you already have some people in mind for the committee who've shown interest, my concern is that the committee's already formed without it being officially formed, if you're gonna make a new committee, I would like to see it go out so everyone who may be interested apply, 'cause it, I mean, this is a pretty hot-button issue, a lot of people might wanna be involved, and to already have those people selected is concerning to me. I would like to see it go out to the bigger public, before you're just like, you, 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 we're gonna be this committee.
My, I have been working to get some input from people to determine who will fit the, we'll say, the, the slots of the type of people, not the type, but the demographic in terms of the background education that we'd like to have, so that's, so that I, so I will confess, I have been doing some recruiting to help fill some of these, so, you know, I'm, I, you may not like to hear that, I'm being, but I'm being honest with you, that I've been doing that, 'cause I think that that's part of the success, is to get the right mix, so that was important, that was important to me, and so I have been recruiting what I would consider to be that right mix. So that was important, that was important to me, and so I have been recruiting what I would consider to be that right mix. And a lot of it is through, you know, not, not people I know, but asking other people who provide me names and do some recruiting to really try to get this. In fact, there's a number of people on there I don't even know, people that have been essentially recruited by other people who feel would be, you know, helpful to the cause.
How about the two residents at large, is that being advertised, and are they going to have term limits? This could be an exciting committee to people, I feel like it should be open.
Well, if this turns into something larger than that, than Jen, that could very well be. This is really intended to be a fairly short-term, a couple-of-month effort. If it turns into something more, if this has the value, more value, broader value, then I think maybe, maybe you're right. Maybe it does take on a little bit of a different twist at that time, but it's pretty much sure to know that, we'll put it that way.
Okay, because the duration says it's indefinite and not subject to an expiration date. So you're saying it's short, and our packet's saying it's forever?
Well, I wouldn't say it's forever, it just means there's no specific timeframe, that's all. So I, I do know that during some of the recruiting, there are people who simply aren't looking to get involved in something for a year, or two years, or three years, you know, but they're willing and happy to participate in a fairly short-project-type basis. So, keep you informed, so, and if, if, if people believe that there's value beyond this, that we want to, you know, then we can discuss it from there and see where stage two takes us.
Real, real short, Mr. Townsend, we have a public hearing in one minute.
Very quickly, I just want to say, I, I do agree with Ms. Bogart. I've always been an advocate that there's a lot of knowledge out there in the general public, and when we form these committees, we should give people a chance to be members. And perhaps, I see you have it down for two residents at large, perhaps you might consider enlarging that to four and putting it out there to the general public that a couple of folks who might be interested would be applied.
If that's your recommendation, I'd be happy to do that, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lefan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was one of the longest updates in my professional career, so be happy that it's over.
Heavy topics, yes. So we're going to continue the public hearing for Priolo Plymouth Street Realty Trust. This was, we opened the hearing on Tuesday, July 7th, at 7:10, and the applicants were not here. Is there anyone here representing the applicants? Thank you, sir, do you mind sitting at this table so you can use the microphone? And before you start, do you, do we, Elaine, do we have the certified return receipt, green cards? This is just so we know the, the butters were notified?
Yep.
We do? Okay, great, thank you, that's all right, thank you. Sir, could you just state your name and, and address and?
Just bring the microphone close to you.
Yeah, real close, because we want people at home to hear.
It's Glenn Priolo, the address of the site is 198 Plymouth Street, 198 C Plymouth Street.
Okay, you're on.
I put in an application for storage for underground tanks for propane. The, the property's a townhouse development, so it's residential, 32 units. Normal subdivisions, you'd have property lines, so under this condition, you just need to get a license for approval for storage. But it's no different than putting in a subdivision with 20 houses and having a tank at each house. They're all, it's an individual tank for each building, 11 tanks, I think it's 10,000 gallons of storage at its maximum. They're, they're piped and metered just like the gas company to each unit, so they get three meters per building. The propane company maintains and operates the, the tanks, and we've, like I say, we've had, we've got two in now, because you're allowed up to 2,000 gallons, the next buildings that are going on, we need the license to install the tanks.
You say you have two tanks installed now?
Yeah, because we're allowed up to 2,000 gallons permitted through the Fire Department. So we've got, we've at our maximum now on-site.
I, I understand, okay.
So the rest of them, like I say, so we need a license to just move forward. But it is residential, and it's the same as any other subdivision, it would be, you know, it's just a tank buried in the side yard. They're, they're piped and maintained through, I think it's Superior Fuel.
And I know the board had, I don't know if it's included in this packet, but I know last meeting we had a note from the Assistant Deputy Fire Chief. Okay, good, I just hadn't seen it, saying that they had approved all 11 tanks, is it 11?
Yes.
All 11 tanks. Does the board have any questions? Mr. Balbin?
It's a total of 11, that's what it is, it's not 13, it's not the two plus 11, so it's a total of 13?
No, it's a total, total, total of 11, there's two in now, so we have nine more tanks to install.
Okay, I just want to make sure that.
It's one per building, there's 11 buildings on, approved on-site.
Is that enough for, for three units, one?
Yeah, it's plenty, these are very efficient.
I don't know, I'm just asking.
Thousand gallons, they, they calculate, the propane company, like I said, I didn't even know I had to come, that's why I didn't show up the last time. I thought it was just like an application, because it's, I never ran into that before, because it's just because it's not property lines, it's one, it's one property, you know? So it's, they, they maintain them, they do the figuring, they read the meters, I mean, it's, it's very, it's, it's a simple process, you know?
Is there a certain marking that you do of where the actual tank is, or is it just filed through the town?
We just have to put them to code, so it's 10 feet off the building, 10 feet off the property lines. But I, I brought this sketch in case anybody wanted to just show them where the locations were on the buildings, you know?
I just meant for just, if I went ahead and bought one of these places, am I going to be able to turn around and say, okay, well, this is exactly where it is, by just looking?
Oh, yeah.
Where the tanks?
Yeah, it comes out, yeah, there's a tower coming out of the ground where they read and fill and everything, so they're all, it's, they're easy to locate.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, will you approve?
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much, appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a donation of $1,500 to Union Cemetery by Clark Griffith.
Make a motion that we approve?
Second.
Any discussion, is there anyone here who is here for the Clark Griffith donation? Okay, motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I'd like to thank the Clark Griffith family for this.
Yes.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next item is acceptance of anonymous gift of $3,200 for the cupola at the new police station building. Is that you, Mr. Robinson? Please come, sit at the mic. Tell us your name and address.
Good to see you all, Dave Robertson, 38, South Main Street. Allow me to get my spectacles on, to make a spectacle of myself. Select Board members, my name's Dave Robertson. I'm here tonight to offer the town a gift on behalf of a few donors. As we know, gifts are made for the pleasure of those that give them, not the merits of who received them. Gifts consist not of what is done or given, but of the intention of the giver. As we all know, the best gifts come from the heart. Years from now, when we're all forgotten, the town will still have this gift. A little history towards this, if you will indulge me. When the architect originally designed our beautiful police station, we, the Police Station Advisory Board, asked for a cupola and a copper top. A wish list, if you will, of all the things that we wanted. Due to cost control and efficiencies in the use of taxpayer money, the copper top to the cupola was cut from the design. A savings that was a result of value engineering. We believe the copper top on the cupola will bring a degree of aesthetic charm and delight to the project. And therefore, three people have contributed towards the copper installation. And we offer this gift to you to be used for the sole purpose of adding that copper top back to the cupola. A handout, I was going to bring with me, but I saw the picture of the new police station with the copper on it, on the, on the Carver website. I will mention that the three people that donated were John M. Dele Priscoli, Michael Melanowski, and Dave Robertson. Please accept our gift to the town, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion to accept, second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Ford.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along, we are at the reappointment of special police officers, and I believe our chief is here. Here he comes. Good evening, Chief.
Can I take this off?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for your time tonight. Every year, we reappoint our special police officers. As we've talked about before, our special police officers are not full-time police officers, they're police officers that help us out with filling road details. This year, we have seven that I've given you the names of that were asking to be reappointed. Pretty standard thing, we usually do it at the first meeting in July, a little behind with COVID. But, so I would just respect the request that we reappoint Michael O'Donnell, Walter Benoit, James Moscato, Patrick Charette, Ashley Odell, Peter Allegrini, and John Banzola, Special Police Officers of the Town of Carver. They've all worked out very well for us, especially in this last few days in the heat, working with the paving project. I know we get residents upset when we're blocking the roads and making it difficult to get there, but it's a project that has to get done, and without them helping out, it would have been much more difficult, so. I would appreciate if we could get you guys to vote on that tonight.
It was a good detour.
Yes.
The prettiest part of town. Thank, thank you, Chief.
That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion to reappoint those special police officers.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much, thank you, have a good day.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Ms. Lefan.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a discussion and possible vote on exempting Carver residents from fees for the use of town property. I tried to make this as specific as I can, could this time around, I didn't want it to surprise anyone on the board. And the town properties that we're talking about are basically Shirtlift Park and the gazebo, those are the only two, Elaine, I believe, yeah.
Wasn't sure if you were also going to add in the, the pond?
The ponds? Well, I, it wasn't my intention to actually talk about the ponds, but I guess we could, just says town properties, so. I, where I was coming from on this, it started a long time ago when I learned that the, our Carver's Agricultural Commission was charged a fee for using farm, the park, Shirtlift Park for the farmer's market. And I know that the, the Market Master charges each of the vendors a very nominal fee, and that money is actually used to pay for things like pony rides and the musicians who come there. Largely children's activities, but also the, the musical, the musicians who come there. And so I just felt like, this is a, this is a Carver commission, these are made up of Carver residents, even though some of the vendors are not from Carver, they have to pay for their tables. I just felt that it, it feels wrong to me to require a Carver resident, a taxpayer, to pay for the use of Shirtlift Park or the, with gazebo. And the other group that came to mind for me was the Carver Red Hat Mamas. These are, it's a nonprofit group, it's a bunch of ladies who get together just for social, talking. And they were able to do that recently, I know, at Shirtlift Park, and really benefited from that. And I'm not, I'm not trying to just point out these two groups, I'm talking about any, I think, my opinion, any Carver resident, whether, unless they belong to, the group they belong to is, is a for-profit. So I guess that was my, was my take on this, and I wanted to get the board's opinion and possible vote on this.
Is yours?
Yes, Mr. Townsend?
I think it's an excellent idea, my only thought was, and I, and I heard you mention it, that perhaps we should make it a little more specific, the Carver nonprofit groups.
Absolutely, mhm, no, I agree. Anybody else?
I agree. I know, used to be with the Boy Scouts, that for a couple of years, we didn't have to pay to use the school for our events, and then all of a sudden, we had to pay for it, and we usually clean up after ourselves. That's one of my big things, is that if you're going to use our property and you're going to get it for free, then your job is to keep it clean. The way it looks when it comes in is, should be looked better than when you leave. Not to say that you have to paint and do other stuff to it, but just keep it clean and neat. So I have no problem for that, and like I said, limiting it to nonprofit organizations, and anyone who's not, and we have to look at a fee structure, and I'd like to bring that other fee structure up at a later date. So everyone knows that this is what you have to do.
Right. Like, just.
Yes, Mr. Lefan.
One point, there is a cost associated, oftentimes when the, when the restrooms are open, there is a cost associated, whether it's a town organization, not-for-profit or private. So those funds, either they're being absorbed by the DPW budget, or they're being paid in the form of fees. So it's whatever you prefer, but just be aware of it, that's all.
Right, I guess it was pointed out to me by a particular resident that they pay their taxes for the.
Sure.
And feel that they should be able to use Shirtlift Park? I guess it's a debatable.
No, and I, and I think that's fine, I just want you to be aware of it. If, if it's the board's decision that, that to some extent, there are some costs that need to be absorbed.
Right.
To, to deal with this matter of principle, then we will do so, I just want you to be aware of it, that's all.
Yeah, yes, Mrs. West.
Specifically for that, we were talking about, we had told them the bathrooms would not be open, and they wanted them open. And I think that is probably why.
That's by what, I'm sorry?
Have been why, then.
Who, who are we speaking, how are we?
Can you use the microphone?
Yeah, Elaine, I can't hear you, sorry.
I'm not positive on this, but I, I think normally they ask for the fee to be waived, but I think specifically the red.
Red Hat Mamas.
I could be confusing this with someone else, but I believe they wanted the bathrooms opened.
Okay.
And I think that's where.
So there's a possible cost there, but, once again, just be aware of it, certainly whatever you prefer, we're going to do, but just be aware of it.
Well, Mr. Hoffman?
Just had a quick question, and I think, Elaine, you might have just mentioned, at times when people apply, do they apply to have the fee waived? What I've seen in the past, is that for Shirtlift Park?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know what recent practices, but I know that the Agricultural Commission, for example, protested, and didn't get anywhere with that. So, and again, I can't speak to any other particular group, so those are the only two I'm aware of that had, had an issue. And for me, the Agricultural Commission was, was the big deal, but. So I guess I would entertain a mo, did you want to say something, Mrs. Bogart?
Do other towns charge fees for their residents, do we know?
I'm sure, I'm sure it's all over the place, Jen.
Probably is.
Yeah, I, I don't know that you're going to find a specific pattern. I mean, it, it is, you know, let's face it, we're government, we try to get as much money out of people as we can, but generally, I would think it would be a similar situation where there'd have to be some appeal for something to be waived. If I were, if I were bidding, I would say that most towns probably charge some fee, whether it's nominal. So I don't know that there's a good example to, to go by, I think it's whatever you think is, in this case, what's just appropriate for Carver.
So then, you said for the not-profits, so when Captain Powell came back to hold their graduation there, would they have to pay? their graduation there, would they have to pay the fee because they're preschool and they're not like registered as a nonprofit?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, it's up to the board, something like that, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, but they could ask to have a fee waived.
And I, Ms. Hughes, if I may, I think as a board, whenever we grant permission to use town-owned property, we can always make that motion and waive the fees. I think that's something we've done in the past. I just think, if someone's not a nonprofit, I'm not sure how comfortable I feel about making that standard practice. So I don't know, do we wanna talk, do we wanna make a motion tonight, or do we wanna talk about this for the future?
It's up to the board, I'll entertain a motion.
I just think it needs to be more specific, because I'm thinking of the Captain Powell, I know the, the application came from Kathleen Walker, and she is a resident in town, and it's a town school. If we're gonna pass it, I think Carver residents needs to be to nonprofit and maybe even stronger. So there's no ambiguity, there's so much ambiguity in bylaws and everything else, if we're gonna start a new policy, can we just make it clear?
I think maybe it's a good idea.
We can do that.
Maybe we should put it on a future agenda and refine it a little bit, just to make it a little more clear.
And any other ideas, I mean, that's a very good point, because technically, they're Carver kids and in Captain Powell's, and the Carver teachers, but they're not nonprofits, so yeah, it's a good point.
Right, I mean, let's just, so no one's coming, well, what does this mean?
Exactly.
Let's not be wishy-washy.
That's good. Mr. Belvin?
And I'd like a timeframe for this, and to be honest, the whole beach, I would not put this with the beaches personally, I would just limit it to Shirtlift Park or here, just for the fact of saying, if you start saying the beaches, well, then, I'm renting this out for the town, or, and keeping other people out in the summertime, that just, you're just looking for problems, Mike, and limiting, one second, just limiting timeframe too, to say, okay, that it's gonna be for a two-hour block, we don't want someone there for five, six hours going on for a long period of time, and then, lo and behold, we have other issues with other people going through there, and complaints and whatnot, so there's a clear defined timeframe of the use, and that it's a short use.
Yeah, so we can work this out, Mr. LaFond, I think maybe for the next meeting, and I'm sorry, Mr. Hoffman, did you wanna say something? Okay. So, yeah, and I definitely did not mean ponds when I brought this up, it said it on the original agenda, Shirtlift Park and the gazebo only, so.
I think my only, when I talked about the pond, it's not so much the beach area, it's if the Boy Scouts are having a fishing area or something like that, using the pond in that way, that's what I was thinking about, not so much the beach area.
Well, again, that's, it's not on the agenda, so we can't really go there right now. I hear what you're saying. Okay. Update from Mr. Belvin and Mr. LaFond on the Town of Marion's withdrawal from the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District, and on all other solid waste slash recycling options, including the transfer station.
Would you like me to go first, Bob?
Sure, and I'll fill in.
Well, that's what I think, yeah, you can, first of all, with regard to solid waste options, the board is aware that we did join with Wareham in doing an RFP for curbside services. We are actually an ad alternate on their own proposal, whether or not Wareham will end up going with a curbside program or not, I don't know, I don't know if they know at this point. There were, was a pre-bid conference scheduled for last week, four potential proposers did show up, and the deadline for submitting proposals is August 11th. Upon evaluating those proposals, then we will have, that's, it's kind of a step-by-step process here, at that time, we'll have a better idea as to what the cost structure may be for a curbside program, we'll be able to discuss that with other, with private vendors to determine, you know, if there's any legitimate fiscal opportunity, either for the residents or the town as a whole, rather than the existing structure. At that time, I think there'll be some ability to make some recommendation, whether or not there's actually enough incentive for the town, for the Board of Selectmen to feel that it's an appropriate option to bring to the town, I don't know that yet, I do know the factors, some of the major factors at work are the cost of disposal and the cost of labor, that would make sense to everybody. I would anticipate that the larger companies would be able to have a more economical way to dispose of trash and recycling, on the other hand, you know, private haulers aren't required to pay prevailing wages, prevailing wages are what drive the labor costs significantly with regard to a curbside municipal program. So there's gonna be probably a trade-off in terms of the economics of this, from a single hauler, curbside, versus the current practice of individual contracts. So again, it's premature to know if there's really gonna be the kind of economics that the board would feel is helpful or not, but that timeframe is coming relatively soon, and we'll be able to evaluate that a little bit more carefully and present that to the board. With regard to the discussions, negotiations with Marion, and again, I'm just, real quick, I'm just gonna point out that we are meeting with one other member of the, of the, one other of the town's representatives to the district this week, specifically to discuss some of these issues, how that, how this may go forward with Marion, I think it's, everybody's aware that obviously Carver is a, and the representatives from Carver hold a significant position in this, in terms of, of, you know, the makeup of the board and what decisions may exist going forward, so I think it's, it is pretty important that we get on, try to do, try to do what we can to kinda get on a similar page here in Carver. So Bob, please, fill in, add, disagree, whatever you prefer.
No, that's fine. So far, you're right on track. I just want people to understand that time is really of the essence to an extent to if we're going to keep a transfer station or not, because it's gonna take time to get things up and running. That being said, I've pushed the district to hold Marion to their town meeting vote. Their first initial vote was to exit the district, the district got sidelined with creating this new agreement, where Marion kinda didn't held their feet and said, okay, nope, we don't have to do anything, and they weren't going to do anything, with coming to negotiate with the district to go ahead and exit the district. This past meeting we just had, on Wednesday, they said that they will come back to the district with their offer of how they wanna leave the district, how that's going to be, I don't know, once we get that, we can find out. That way, the Town of Wareham in Carver, the representatives can evaluate what that offer is, and either we can accept it or modify it and negotiate with Marion, in my opinion, if Marion leaves the district and we can set an agreement with that, it only leaves Carver and Wareham together, and there'll be money back in the district, because the district won't end. There could be an opportunity for the Town of Wareham and Carver to enter either a municipal agreement for a short-term basis, or of a possibility of maybe leasing the property from the district for a short period of time, up to two years, to keep it, to see if it runs or not, if it's worth it for us, so that it's not like the North Carver Water District where we're stuck in it forever, that if it's, we can't keep the district running with the funds that are given to us to run the district, then it's, the town needs to get out of it, and then there's a exit agreement, that how we exit the district, and whether we leave Wareham to run the facility themselves, it's up to that, if we can't afford it here within Carver, which is part of a negotiated that we'll have to do with Wareham. We're still on talks, me and Wareham, Rick, I'm hoping to use his expertise when we start to look at what Marion has come back to the district for, even though it's between the district members, it's not the individual towns, but I think Rick's expertise to really look at this agreement to make sure it's reasonable, and it's good for the Town of Carver or the district with that. So that's a good thing, that they're at least coming back and giving us an option. Them going with this agreement, the new agreement, that would be voted at the next town meeting, with the two questions, that would keep them in the district, that would keep them one of the voting members, and that's a third of the vote, and we don't need that, I think that having them exit out, it's still, they're gonna have to pay if something happens to the district, no matter what. If something happens to the landfill in South Carver, there's still parties to it, it doesn't expunge them leaving the district from their requirements, so they're still part of the, if something happens, they're still part of that, they're gonna have to pay their third. So I think this is a plus between the RFP that we're working with Wareham with, I think that them coming back to us is a good thing for Marion to let us know in the district of what's going on. I'm hoping that if this all works out, great, that there's another option for our town for trash disposal. That's been my goal, is to provide an option, but it can't be an option based on that every taxpayer's gonna pay for the use, it really shouldn't. It should be the people that use it, they're gonna, they're gonna pay for it, and the town should not have to pay to keep it up. That being said, one of the things the district is doing is they have a household, hazardous waste they're paying for to run, and it's being reimbursed by Cavanta because of the agreement that we have. It's gonna be in Wareham at 95 Charge Pond Road in Wareham, and at Benson Brook Transfer Station in Marion. It's gonna be Saturday, August 22nd, 2020, from 9:00 a.m. till noon, all right? Everyone in the town will be receiving, or has received, a notice in the mail. If you haven't, you will get one, they were all mailed out already. Okay, I gave one to all the members here, and I dropped some extra ones off down the building department, so they have it available too. It tells you exactly what you can bring and what you can't bring, all right, and what they'll accept. So that being said, I think that's pretty much all I have for right now, and I'm hoping you guys have questions.
So, so I do, Mr. Belvin, so just to be clear, Wareham is writing that RFP, not Carver?
That is correct.
Okay, that's, I just want people to be aware of that.
Right, it's their RFP, and as I mentioned, Carver is included as an add alter, alternate delete, so that if Wareham should wish to go forward, we could also participate in a program if we chose to, we're not required to, it's very possible Wareham could choose to go forward with, in some fashion, and Carver chooses not to, so.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make that clear, because I know some of the members were concerned that...
Sure, yeah, no, this is...
It sounded like we were doing something, the town meeting had voted no.
No, we're piggybacking, is what we're doing.
Okay. So I, in light of that, could you tell me some more of the options you're looking into? An agreement with Wareham, potentially, anything else you can?
So, first, let me say this, is that Wareham hired a professional to do an evaluation on the cost for a transfer station to be run, and they provided draft amounts, they haven't come back with a final, of this is exactly what we have, for costs, but what they have done is they've also put money in to do the RFP, and we are, have a small amount of money that has to be put in to pay for that, I don't know what the final cost, I know it was under $2,000.
Right.
The exact amount, I don't know. So we are secondary to that, so we could reap the benefits, we're price-wise, because it's a larger group, instead of just Carver's 4,400 residents, households, I should say, and Wareham's 8,000, 11,000 residents, we may benefit from that, we may not, who knows? But at least we'll have figures to go back to town meeting, because the vote with the district is still gonna have to go forward, in some way, shape, or form, it's gotta go back. So some of the options with Wareham, Ware, we'll start with the first one, is Wareham's gotta do something, whether it's join with Carver to run a transfer station, or they run their own, they're gonna have to do something, they've already taken steps of having a waste management person for their town, and they're more than likely looking at other options of either running something for themselves in their own town, or running it at the transfer station, that's the first one, or two, I should say. The other option is Carver can join with them and with a municipal agreement in two different ways. One is, we can do a municipal agreement and buy the facility from the district, which is gonna cost money, and then update it, do whatever needs to be done, that will be, cost money. The next one is that we can go ahead and do a lease program where we just have a lease with the district, that we lease the property, and then lo and behold, the two town administrators get together and try to run it with one of their DPW people or management, and they run it, and we kinda help out. If Wareham goes ahead and does their own thing, and does it in their own town, they may offer us to go in, like Mr. Melanowski did for Plymouth, but of course, it's gonna be a higher fee, because they're more than likely gonna go ahead and, you're gonna pay that rate, you're gonna do bag fees, and then you're gonna have to do something on top of that, which then makes the whole price a little bit more. Carver can always look at it and try to do something on ourselves at some point, if the, when the district leaves their entity, and if there's any money available or whatnot, and it gets put back to the town, we could always put that into an account for a future, who knows? But time's kinda ticking away right now, and if we don't do something, then people start calling haulers and finding out what's gonna happen, and I haven't done that yet, and to be honest, I'm hoping by the next meeting with the district that we'll have some guidance of where we're gonna go at, and bring it back to the town to say, hey, this is what we have to do. It's a tough situation, and it's all gonna cost money, and we still don't know what some of the other haulers are coming at, with numbers to, at the end of the year, to start next year off. So what their prices, could be better, could be worse than the RFP, who knows? But I wanna keep the transfer station open, I like going there, there's a lot of issues at the transfer station on Route 28, and it's because Cavanta runs it, the district does not run that. So things that are going on down there, we have no control over. We're putting Cavanta's foot to the flames about things that were required of them to do, and as you, if you go down there, they're starting to clean it up a little bit more, they're cleaning out drainage areas, they're fixing the compactors that were supposed to be done, so we are making sure that they are going to maintain the facility the way they're supposed to. So we are trying to hold their feet to the fire, but it, then, they're gonna start paying at the end of the year, so. I think the town needs to do something for its residents and offer something, so hopefully things can happen, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hoffman?
So is there still a chance the district's gonna close, as far, like, so, let's just step back, Marion's the only town out of the three that have voted to approve to leave the district, is that correct?
Yes, Marion's the only town that has went to town meeting and asked to leave the district, and to nego, they were supposed to negotiate back then with the district about leaving, they were supposed to do that, the district was supposed to do that, unfortunately got sidelined to create a new agreement, which they wanna go to town meeting, the district itself has already voted to close Route 28 facility as a district. It doesn't preclude alternates, options with Carver and Wareham to enter a municipal agreement and through the district, run it as a district, if Marion wasn't there, and there's enough votes to go along with it, then it could stay open and run as a district, or it can go ahead and, a municipal agreement and possibly lease the facility for a short period of time, and then you wouldn't have to pay any money out of pocket, that's kinda, hopefully not having to do.
So is there still a chance that Carver and Wareham could vote to leave the district as well?
At the next town meeting.
So that's...
That will be their first, the town's first opportunity to turn around and leave the district, and what you'll end up doing is you'll be voting to change the existing agreement that created a Carver, Marion, Wareham district, waste district, you're gonna change that, and you're gonna drop it down to a small quote skeleton, which is basically three members, one from each one of the towns, and then you go ahead and... And then you go ahead and you will not run a transfer station, you're just gonna, those members are gonna be taking care of the money issues, paying off the bills that have to be paid off, and they'll probably meet quarterly if this goes on, and, because there's still things that have to be done as a district about monitoring the South Carver landfill.
I guess my question was, where Marion is gonna come back with you with a counterproposal, or wouldn't they wait to see if the other two towns voted to leave the district?
Well, see, that's really difficult to do, because you need to know where you're at. In order for us to turn around and take action, they've already started that first step.
Okay.
Okay, unfortunately, like I said, it was sidetracked to do this other agreement. They, personally, I felt that they weren't listening to their town meeting when they said negotiate out of the district. They were supposed to do this, and they didn't, and that's where I pushed them to this. And I'm glad they have finally decided to come back and say, yes, we'll come back with a proposal to leave the district. Then the district representatives can assess that and say, is it in better favor for us to get them out of the district, let them go, and whatever that agreement is, so be it, and then it allows Carver and Wareham to still be a district, and possibly if utilizing the information garnered from the RFPs, the information from their professionals to come back, so we have options. And I wanna see as many options coming back to town meeting, not just the option to get out of the district with these agreement, but also to turn around and put the RFP, how much it's gonna cost with transfers, if we do a single hauler system, or a hybrid of it, or whatever it's gonna be, or let people do whatever they want, I'm sorry, let people do whatever they want. And I understand that that's what people, some people want, other people just want the cheapest option, and I'm one of those people that want the cheaper option, and if it can work, great, if it can't, I'm all for getting out of it, if we can't keep it under the amount of money that we have.
I'm just trying to see what all the different scenarios are. So in other words, like, there is an option, a chance that all three towns vote to close the district, and then it's done. Our Marion has already voted on that, Carver and Wareham vote to stay in, and then those options, like you said. So I'm just trying to see what the different scenarios are, because I know a lot of people have asked me, and I'm trying to get caught up on, up to speed on all that, so.
It's really, it's really difficult, I mean, it's just the demographics of the district and how it works, and we're nine members district. And when the votes come in, and, okay, fine, well, if you don't like that vote, I can say, I don't like that vote, I really don't. I think that we can provide an option, the Carver doesn't provide a whole heck of a lot of services for their residents as a whole, and they are limited, and this is one service that we've benefited for almost 30 years, that we benefited from low-cost trash and recycling efforts. And I just wanna keep that going. If we can still provide a low-cost option, then the haulers, and it's a good system, and it's not costing the taxpayers money, that it's just the people that are using the services, that's great. If it's not, then so be it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin.
I have nothing. I think Mr. Belvin did a fine job of analysis.
Great, thank you. Okay, the next item, and I see Savory, are you here for this?
I'm here to listen.
Oh, good, okay. Well, I saw you, and I thought, oh, you know, I should've told Savory, being the new chair, my apologies. This is supposed to be a positive thing. I do use conservation lands, go walking, and my husband's an even bigger user of them than I am. And we understand that, you know, staffing is short, it's probably not what it should be. And I've had lots of conversations with Mr. Badger about the same topic, and he has all kinds of helpful ideas. So I just wanted to have a brief discussion on possibly establishing something that I just made up, calling the Conservation Land Ad-Hoc Committee, to study and find solutions for access to and maintenance of conservation lands townwide. And I know sometimes two commissions, sometimes their membership just isn't capable of, you know, brush cutting, or splitting logs, or something, so I just, I don't, would you, Dan, would you and Savory like to come up and give us your two cents on this? No? Yes? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but. You're here, so. And Savory Moore is the chair of the Conservation Commission, and Dan Badger is a Conservation Commission member. And again, this is meant to be a positive thing, a helpful thing too, it's not anything negative.
For the record, I live at 12 South Main Street.
Savory, I'm sorry, you don't have to really bring it closer, because it's hard for people at home to hear.
Yeah, I live at 12 South Main Street, Savory Moore, chairman of the Conservation Commission. Dan actually called me earlier tonight and told me that this was on the agenda.
Yeah, and I apologize to both of you.
That's okay, that's okay, I'm here. So this is probably, was probably born out of a conversation that was had back when the COVIDs first started, when Michael Malonowski asked the Conservation Commission to have a special meeting to identify some funding that's available through conservation that we could, funds that we could release to the town in an effort to avoid furloughs during the COVID.
That's not, that's not how it got on the agenda, because
Okay.
my train of thought came from an entirely different area.
Okay.
And it came, a lot of it came from Dan himself.
Well, I think, and I'm not gonna put, I'm not gonna put words in Dan's mouth, but I think that probably was born in that meeting, you know, talking about the funding that was available, the fund that is available to conservation.
Right, I know the fund.
Right, and right now.
Establishing it, but I'm not sure we can talk about that fund here, because it's not on the agenda, first of all, and second.
I thought it was, I thought there was.
No, no, it just says, "To study and find solutions for access to and maintenance of conservation lands townwide, membership be, to be proposed, et cetera." Now, again, that's really not, the fund isn't on the discussion, and it's not clear to me. I know what this fund can be used for, I'm not sure it can actually be used for maintenance. I think that's something we have to find out.
Right, well, that's where I was going with this, actually, is that we are not sure. We think that the wording doesn't allow for maintenance, and, but Dan has brought up at a number of our conservation meetings the fact that we think that it should be somehow.
Yeah, that's, Rick, can we get an answer for that, to that question? Thank you.
Right, so.
So I just wanna know what you think about this idea of having a subcommittee, little, not a subcommittee really, but an ad hoc committee, just to figure out, I mean, Dan has so many ideas all by himself, he could be an ad hoc committee, but I don't want him doing this alone. I think it's really important, especially now, when, you know, people need to be outdoors in a safe way, so they can be getting fresh air, exercise, the kids can run around, and nobody's telling them, you know, to stay away.
Personally, personally, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. I saw that you, the makeup would include two members from conservation, and you, I believe, is chair, and also two members from agriculture. I'm wondering, and I don't know the answer to this, I'm wondering if there's another group that we should pull someone from, that, you know, and I really don't know what group we could pull from.
I don't either, and I, the only reason I threw myself into the mix is because, of course, I was the conservation agent for many years, and so I know how we used to maintain the trails, how we, how, you know, things used to be. The job was full-time then, the agent's job, and I know it's not now, things are very different. And, and again, we can't constantly have the poor scouts come out, do something, and then it gets ruined the next year by graffiti artists, or vandals, or whatever you wanna call it. So it's something, something kind of, I wanna have a place and a time and the right mix of people in the room to kinda figure out what are the problems, how do we, how do we solve this, and how do we make it so that the townspeople can kind of take ownership in what I think is an important way, and I credit Dan for that idea, I think that's really important. Conservation and ag commission members may come and go, but, you know, grandpa so-and-so and his grandson, this trail, it was maintained by them, you know? So anyway, it's just, it's something that we're not, I'm not asking you to necessarily vote on tonight, but I would really like to get it started. Dan, can we hear it from you? Mr. Badger? Keep it short, just kidding.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dan Badger, 165 Plymouth Street. Yeah, through different discussions with different groups and organizations in town, and individuals that on their, on their own play, I think, an important role in helping, at least to try to maintain some of the conservation properties that we already have in town, just by simply taking a walk and picking up trash and being good citizens. Unfortunately, one or two people is not enough, and having something established either through the blessing of the Select Board and Conservation and other bodies, those good intentions won't die in the vine, and will actually become something that can actually create more connectivity with the community. Through starting with a volunteer-driven group, there's a, there is a, the beginnings of a group, which I can talk about at a different time, but it is a volunteer-driven group whose main purpose is to work on conservation properties in town. Having some be family-friendly programming, and also in concert with that, educational programming. Liaising with the police, with fire, DPW, so it actually can serve as, for high school students, can serve as internship or community service time as well. So there's a lot of, it benefits people in a lot of ways, and directly benefit, will benefit the community and the properties that we should be proud to have and call our own, so, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Belvin.
So this sounds like a really good idea. I think maybe adding members of the community to this ad hoc committee, eliminating it just to the chair and Conservation and Ag Commission.
That's a good idea.
I think bringing it out to seven members as a total is a better option to get at different people's opinions and thoughts, process of where they'd like to go. And a big thing is, is just finding solutions, like you said, here to access and maintenance. Maintenance is a big issue with some of the conservation lands within town. Knowing a couple of different scout projects that I helped out with, and to keep those up and running is really difficult. And, I mean, when you have the coal property, they owns a great property, and you got people riding dirt bikes and quads out there and doing some damage, that's difficult to turn around and see, because they do damage.
And it is a big property.
And it is a big property, but there's other conservation properties in the town that owns, and I'm sure people don't know, off of Wenham Street, there's a property that Conservation owns too, that is underutilized. It's a great piece of property, and part of the issue is probably parking for that, because it's the location. But no matter what, it's a nice property, and granted, there's no active trails out there, but people do use it for hunting out there. And I think that's another avenue that you could tap into some of the hunters within the town that utilize the properties that we have here for that, because they're all about conservation.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and they're, yeah, and they're more, I mean, the three that I think of almost immediately are the coal property, which is over 200 acres, and then you have Savory Avenue Conservation Land, which is now over, I think it's over 50 acres. And you have the land on Indian Street, the Indian Brook Conservation Land. That Camden Trail is a memorial trail. I haven't actually looked at that one recently, but I know the trails on Savory Avenue are completely inaccessible, I mean, enormous trees, no one, I certainly couldn't move them. The little green trail markers are still there, but you're looking around, like, where's the trail? And then there are lands like Bob has mentioned, that there's no trail, there are no trails, they just haven't been looked at in a very long time. There's a long list, they are in the Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
One of the, one of the pieces that I think will drive this for the long term and establish a foundation for something real and meaningful is to, in fact, have an educational piece to that. This typically leads to groups taking more pride in not only the volunteer work that they do, but becoming part of something that they can then turn around and provide, whether it be educational programming to youth, or whether it be, you know, event, events that could be speakers for the, you know, the COA, at the COA, for example, to share what they've been doing, you know, in these different public areas. And also what that indirectly does, like speaking from other conservation projects I've worked on different parts of the country, it translates into that area being very well policed, and tends to mitigate some of the issues that come up, whether it be illegal ATV riding, or off-season hunting, or the like. But it also encourages, encourages people to understand and respect alternate, all uses of that property, including hunting season, and knowing how to safely recreate those properties during those times as well, so that parties from both sides of the spectrum can learn to get along and appreciate why they both utilize that property.
So are you suggesting that we add an educational component, public educational component to our little mission statement here, if we establish this?
I would, I think, I think it serves a lot of purposes, not only for the, for the program and for the conservation properties themselves, but also, I think, the education of the youth in this town as well, in terms of maybe, maybe being people that will be able to carry on those kinds of missions in towns, whether it be this town or wherever they move to later in life, so, yeah.
No, I think that's a terrific idea. Ms. Bogart?
Okay, two questions. One, well, first statement, I love the idea, and expanding the opportunities, too, you're talking about that. That could open up a whole new door of stuff for the Recreation Committee to plan, and the Open Space and Rec, and just, I love the idea. First question, when the solutions for access and maintenance are found, how would they be enacted? Would the group itself be able to take the action, would they have to come to this board to get approval? How would the stuff that they find get done?
Well, I think that would be part of the discussion that would take place in that group. I mean, obviously, if we're establishing an ad hoc committee, and there was something they felt they needed permission to do, I guess they would have to come to us, but, for example, I know the Conservation Commission owns a gravely, because I purchased it, because a former chair told me to, I don't know where it is. But, so there's things that would have to be kind of figured out as we go, but I guess that's correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Belvin. If there was some reason for them to come back to us, then that would be appropriate.
Right, and to the extent that there'd be any requirements for, you know, the use of, you know, town labor equipment, those things would have to be, you know, approved, scheduled.
That's true.
I don't know that there'd be any permitting requirements that would come out of this that could require, I wouldn't think so. So I would think it would be more than anything else, just a commitment of resources, as opposed to permissions, so to speak.
Yeah, because it said, "Study and find the solutions," it didn't say to then enact them. I would like to see them enacted. If the committee's able to find them, let's make sure they have the resources to enact them. And then my second question, and I don't know if you can discuss it because of what he said. What's this fund that you and Savory were talking about in the beginning? Can we talk about that?
No, we can't.
No, okay.
It's not on the agenda. I'll tell you about it.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, long story. So you'd like that added to the mission statement, to enact solutions?
Or to be able to, I mean, it would be disappointing if this committee figures out a ton of awesome solutions, and then it's like, okay, what do we do now? Like, being on the master plan committee?
Yeah, I know.
There's awesome master plan, what do we do? Hmm, we need to figure out a way to enact it, so let's.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's figure out how whoever finds solutions can do it.
That will be my primary goal, because we, people really need to be able to use these lands,
Yes.
and they're wonderful pieces of property.
I would just say, though, real quickly, that a committee like this, an ad hoc committee, is not really a committee that enacts things.
Right.
You know, it's a committee that makes recommendations, probably finds solutions, makes recommendations on how to enact, but a committee like this, they don't have resources per. resources per se attributed to them, but I think, um, you know, and to what extent does something need to be enacted. I think putting that in the mission statement, I don't think is fair-
Okay.
-to a committee like that, but I, I, I think that's-
Fair point.
Certainly, it's something, uh, recommendations that are critical, but I, I just don't know that that's a, that's not fair to put into a committee, uh, mission statement under these conditions.
So we could, we could ask the committee to recommend how these things should get enacted, instead of putting it on the shelf somewhere and-
Right.
Right, that was, that was my first question of do they come to us for approval? How, how can we get their recommendations put in practice?
It will be done. Mr. Belvin?
So the ad hoc committee, they, they will bring it to us. We will turn around and go back to them, just saying this a lot, is that we will tell them, we agree with what you guys want to do. We're going to help you get it done. That's going to be our job. And if it comes to funding or whatnot, is there a way that we can create a accepted fund, um, for stuff like this? So if there's money available from the Conservation Commission or for something else, uh, out there for grants or whatnot, that that money can be dedicated, say someone wants to give a gift of money to it, that it can be put into this separate account for the total usage of it, of taking care of something like this.
And we can always, you can always, the town can always accept gifts for a specific purpose, um, that are dedicated to that purpose. So you don't need to have a, a fund already created for that. So you can accept, like you did this evening, you accepted gifts. So that in itself wouldn't be an issue. The, if it's a matter of having some, uh, funding for, for, uh, matching grant funds, I think we can, I think we do have a, a small amount of funding within the budget.
Yeah.
I'm looking at Elaine, she's ignoring me, uh, very, very strategically, I might add. I'm, I'm sorry for, so we may, I guess, I have to look at that more, Bob, but I, it's a valid point. I mean, you have to have some, you, but we might have to have some, even if it's a small, almost seed resources, uh, depending on the situation. So, again, this is the thing, you know, we have, we're at such an early stage of trying to, of doing something, it's, you know, it's kind of hard to envision all the different directions we might have to go to.
Mr., Mr. Hough Townsend, sorry.
Thank you.
Hough Townsend.
I think there's a lot of good thoughts, uh, floating around the room here. Uh, one thing I would advocate, as I always do, is I'd like to see two or, or even four members of the general public on this committee. I think this is something that could really bring a lot of people in with a lot of good ideas. So I, I'd like to see it expanded a little bit to include some members of the general public.
Okay, well, yeah, and, and Mr. Belvin suggested too, um, if, if the board wants to take a vote tonight, it's, it's your call how many, but I, I agree. I like the idea of certain number of members of the public.
If, if you would like, we could certainly, we have a, a master list of, of vacancies. We can, uh, put, add those if you'd like, and even the two additional from the committee we discussed earlier, put those on our master list, let people apply, give them some period of time, so.
Absolutely.
Get them on the website as well.
That would be-
Catherine's here, perhaps she could put them in the paper so people know that these, these vacancies exist.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend, did you want to add something? Sorry, I mean, Mr. Hoffman, here I go.
I thought you were doing that on purpose.
Been a long night.
Just, just my own, so an ad hoc committee, would they report to a, like Janet asked, would they, do they report to a regular committee? So, in other words, is this an ad hoc committee of the Select Board?
Correct. Is that correct?
That is correct, right.
They would report to you.
Create a committee and reports to you.
Correct, yes. Any other board member, and then I want Mr. Badger, go ahead.
I was just going to make a motion.
Oh, well, we can make a motion in a second, and then more discussion.
I make a motion, we, um, approve a ad hoc committee on conservation land to study for solutions, uh, for access and maintenance of conservation lands townwide. Um, membership proposed to be Select Board Chair, two members of Conservation Committee, two members of Agricultural Committee, and four members of the general public, not to exceed 11, right, two, four, eight, nine, nine.
Nine.
Not to exceed nine members. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, Madam Chair, if I may, um, uh, i- is there a possible way to delay the vote until after the rest of the members of the Conservation Commission have been made aware of this? I mean, it's up to you, obviously, but I just-
We, we, we could, but I mean, like, it would be up to the ex, Conservation Commission to send the two people that they-
No, I understand that, but I, you know, I, I found out about this an hour and a half ago.
I know.
I don't know if Brooke knows, the, the current conservation agent, I don't know if Jim Nowin knows.
I see your point.
And I don't want them to, you know, find out that a vote has been taken-
No, I-
-without their prior knowledge that involves this, so.
Do you have advice, Mr. Lefan?
Well, I will say, you know, it is on the agenda, you know, it, it meets the required posting for the agenda. Uh, you know, I, I don't see where, unless, there's any reason not to move forward. That would be my thought, because it, again-
I mean, it is, it is an ad hoc committee of the board's Select Board.
All right.
No, I don't think this is slighting anybody.
No, no, not, not at all.
Thrusting something upon the Conservation Commission without their knowledge. That would be, that'd be a little different.
Yeah, this is meant to be inclusive, actually.
Right.
Right.
Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, I mean, I want, I don't like to see things delayed too long and it tend to get shuffled under the, uh, under there. I think that, um, just putting it out there, letting know that, all right, this can start up, and, um, for someone to facilitate, which I think that since the chairperson is going to be on this one, that she would, once everyone's notified and she starts out and says, okay, let's have a meeting on this date, that these memberships hopefully can all meet, and people that are interested in being part of this ad hoc committee can apply, and it gives the, us an opportunity to say, okay, fine, great, let's get this going, and, um, I just don't want it delayed. I think it's a really good opportunity for our town, uh, to be inclusive and, and let people know.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Badger.
Just to, uh, address a, a couple, I think, important points that were brought up in terms of fiscal issues. Um, I really, uh, as you know, and some of you know, I never really bring up any of these concepts with having, without having an idea of how to roll it out. Um, uh, obviously, I keep that to myself until the, until, uh, people wanted to start the, the actual discussion, but there are, um, a lot of grants, uh, that are available, um, through Mass Wildlife, Mass Autobahn, through, um, different organizations that are involved with, uh, um, therapeutic and, uh, outdoor activities in general that would be chomping at the bit to, to, uh, be a part of this. Again, this is, uh, this is something that is used, uh, in the area of recreational therapy as a, as a, uh, weaving a, a conduit between all different demographics in, in our town and, and actually surrounding towns. Um, anybody part of the, the overall Taunton Watershed, I think, would want to play some role in, uh, supporting this. That would be-
Oh, and in fact, the Taunton River Watershed Alliance does offer grants, and the coal property happens to be in the Taunton River Watershed.
Uh, I, it was not a slip of the tongue. Um, yeah, so, uh, so those things, those things are obviously critical, and those things will be able to backstop educational programming, backstop the funding that will enable, you know, the, the, the Jones family, you know, uh, you know, maintain this section of the Blue Trail of the coal property, you know, and, um, so that there's a, there's some individual pride to be had as well. Other organizations, they'll be using the property and open space to, uh, facilitate some of their activities and picnics and things like that. Once the properties are enhanced, um, we'll be able to do that as well, so.
No, thank you. That, that, you're absolutely right. I, I've applied for those grants in the past, and they're always eager to help.
Well, I, again, last, I just want to thank the, the board for, uh, suggesting to kick this off.
Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Lefan?
It was raised, there was a quick question about whether or not the mission also, um, included education. That's something that was raised.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that, that should be in-
That's why I wanted to be sure.
Plus educational, um, public education, yes. And just as an aside, um, the, the lands as, as much as possible should be, um, handicapped accessible. Um, the, we started that on the coal property. At one point, we had a great scout who began a, a project, and things, things happened, but that's another aspect of this as well. They do all need to be that way. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, both of you two.
Thank you.
And I apologize again for the lack of notes. Appreciate it.
No problem.
And thank you, fellow board members, for, for helping to do this. Appreciate it. Okay, minutes, licenses, topics, not reasonably anticipated. The chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Our next, um, Select Board meeting will be on September the 8th. And we have the minutes of June 16th, 2020, June 29th, 2020, and July 7th, 2020. I will entertain a motion and a second, or if we have any amendments anyone wants to make?
On the, the minutes where we had the, the Zoom meeting with the planning board, that was our last meeting, when we were voting for the planning board members and alternates, I feel like in one of them, it said, "We had voted for Roger Shores twice, and there was never a vote for John Gasky." Something was, something was a little funny.
So what, what is the date of those minutes?
It was the last meeting that we had, the Zoom one.
No, July 7th. Was it July 7th? Elaine, yours, okay. So maybe, do you want to skip that one? Send your amendments to Elaine, please?
Yes, please.
Um, okay, so let's go back to the other two.
Make a motion to approve July, uh, June 16th, second.
So motion on the floor to approve the minutes of June 16th, 2020. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. June 29th.
Motion to approve June 29th, second.
So motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, and we will, we will do the July 7th at the next meeting. Anyone have any, um, amendments? Uh, do send them to Elaine sooner rather than later. Uh, the next issue is request to use town property, America Backs the Blue slash Blue Lives Matter for Shirtlift Park, 8:23, 2020, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Um, do we have anyone here on behalf of this organization who would like to speak about them? Mrs. Ferrand, would you come up?
So actually, um, I'd like to withdraw the part where it says, "America backs the blue" and, um, "Blue lives matter." Um, I consulted-
I'm sorry, you'd like to what?
On the application, it says, "America backs the blue" and "Blue lives matter." I want to swipe that out because I had some conversation with a couple of the chiefs, and they recommended, um, "Back the blue" and not to use those two organizations. Not that there's nothing wrong with them, just because it gives a different, um, outlook, and we want it to be positive and family-friendly. So, "Back the blue" is what we wanted to,
um, put in there. And I have, um, spoken with, um, a couple of the chiefs, and, um, we've discussed about,
um, the positivity of this, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferrand.
Make a motion to approve.
There is a motion and a second to approve the, uh, the request to use town property by Backs the Blue for Shirtlift Park, 8:23, 2 to 5 p.m. Further discussion?
Miss-
Mr. Belvin?
It says a non-refundable fee of $50. Um, request to waive all fees for this.
Okay, so they are requesting to waive, what is the pleasure of the board?
I amend my motion to include, include waiving of fees.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Uh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, request by Go Gold Group to place gold ribbons on decorative lamp posts in front of police, town hall, library, and fire department, and I'm assuming they have talked to all those departments to make their request. Okay, thank you. Is anyone here, yes, Mrs. Bogart?
Oh, no, I was just-
Oh, okay, that's okay. Very good. Anyone here from that organization? Is there a motion?
motion to approve.
Is there a second?
second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just have a quick question.
Sure.
This, I know there's a Go Gold that's based out of Carver. Is this, so this is different. This isn't the group based out of Carver. This looks like it's out of Bridgewater?
I actually don't know. Do you know record? Should we wait for Elaine to return?
Yeah, it says, "The Go Gold's about at Bridgewater."
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. What, what is the pleasure of the board? There's a motion and a second. Does anyone want to change their minds? No? Okay.
I was just wondering, I know there's a, like I said, a local group, I just thought it was interesting that someone from out of town would want to come. Not that it's bad, I mean, obviously, the more that we help out, the better, but.
They said they did it last year, too.
Yeah, I think they did.
They did.
And I think that there are Carver residents in that group who did it, so, um, okay, so there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Um, Select Board Community announcements. Now, this is just your public service announcements, if you have any. Um, then it'll be followed by Select Board notes, which is new this time. Any public service announcements? Anyone?
I, I have one.
Yes, Mr. Hoffman?
I just wanted to, uh, uh, tell the public that the Kane Strong Golf outing is still on for August 15th. Uh, we filled up with the golfer portion, but we're still accepting raffle prizes, um, up until next week. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Anybody else? Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. This is our first Select Board meeting since the, uh, recent graduate, recent, uh, graduation over at the fire station. So I just wanted to congratulate our 2020, uh, Carver Fire graduates, Jennifer Bartels, Todd Sexton, Sean Farquharson, John Koval, and Benjamin Montelouk. Congratulations.
Very good. Mr. Belvin?
That's what I wanted to do. No, I, I have to say, I was there and, um, graduation was done very well. It was a little later than usual, but, um, no matter what, I think that, uh, service to our town is excellent opportunity, and anyone who's interested should actually go see the fire chief or the deputies and, and talk to them. Um, other than that, thank you very much.
And they are going to be accepting new applications pretty soon. Mrs. Bogart?
Uh, since we're congratulating graduates, I'd like to congratulate the graduating class of Carver High School.
That's right. They did.
Congratulations.
They did. And you just stole mine, so that's okay. Very good. Um, moving along, Select Board notes. And I have these alphabetically, although I will take mine last. Uh, Mr. Belvin?
To the public, this is actually a, a new opportunity for us selectmen. Um, uh, what Sarah has done is, uh, reached out to us and given us an opportunity to, um, have two or three, uh, different topics to discuss out here, and, um, I want to thank you very much for this, and I think it's, uh, really, I appreciate it very much, um, because it could draw out more information, more discussions and talks amongst the members, but also, like, the public, too. Uh, so, thank you.
Thank you.
My first topic here is building maintenance throughout the town. Um, I've seen it, and other people have made comments about it. Um, the town hall, uh, the siding, um, the library also, and, uh, way Shirtlift Park looks, of what can be done to maintain these structures of our town. Um, for many years, a lot of the structures in our town didn't get the attention they needed, and we need to maintain our buildings. Um, with Shirtlift Park, uh, the roof needs to be replaced for the pavilion, uh, the bathrooms need updating, um, not just paint. The Boy Scouts can only do so much, uh, for this town, um, and same with our DPW staff, they can only do so much. Um, if we have a great facility, then we have to maintain that great facility, and if we can't, then we have to find ways of either getting rid of it- can't, then we have to find ways of either getting rid of it, so if we can't maintain it, then it's just going to be dilapidated, and it's going to be an insurance risk for the town, or we maintain it. So we have to understand, what do we want? What are our end goals with our buildings? Do we want to maintain it? If it does, then it's going to cost money, so we have to maintain our properties. We have lost a few buildings within this town because of them not being maintained, and it's unacceptable. So I think that's something that our town needs to work on, is better maintenance, making sure that we have the funds available to maintain all of our buildings, and, excuse me, possibly having a yearly inspection of all the buildings, and coming in and having that inspection brought to our attention, so we can dedicate funds for those. That being said, the town meeting has given money from town meeting to replace the siding and painting of the town hall, but it's still not enough. I think we've only done, I think, three hundred thousand, it's going to be over five hundred thousand to do the building, I guess, something like that. Just, that's one of my topics. The second one is, one of the businesses here in town that's being operated without a business license, if you have a business in town, you need to go before the permitting department downstairs, and you have to get a business license. This serves a number of different purposes. Number one, it tells the town that you're doing a business in town. Number two is, yes, we're going to get taxes from it, all right? We have to turn around and know what your business is and what you're doing there, because if you're running a business that's not permitted for, all right, if it's a residential agricultural area, you can't be running a business out of that, that's not residential agriculture. Excuse me. So it's extremely important. Ran out of water.
Oh, no.
The last one is, I already talked about the transfer station, we need to do something about that. I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm done. I apologize. Thank you. Yeah, not COVID, it's peanuts.
I understand. Thank you, Bob, yeah, we did talk about the transfer station, and to that point, I'll wait till you two. Mrs. Bogart.
Okay, so I thought we're just going to bring up the topics now to get them on the agenda in the future, so I didn't prepare a long explanation of them, but.
That's fine.
So my first one.
That's good.
Is a more standard or formal appointment process to the committees and boards when vacancies or vacancies occur, so like developing some sort of standard questions that we ask. So every committee, anyone who wants to go on a committee, you're always asked, like, what do you think the role of the committee is? Why did you choose this specific committee? Why now? And then also have some questions that might be committee-specific, and what those are, I don't exactly know, but I think the appointment process should be kind of taken more formally and more seriously, so people understand, like, hey, this is pretty important, and that way you can really flesh out who's applying and who would be a really great fit for the job. And part of that was stemmed by our crazy Zoom meeting, trying to appoint planning board people, we know what happened there. So, okay, so my second one is to review the town bylaw two point two point eight to remove ambiguity, because I know when Jim and I were elected to the select board, there was differing ways to read this bylaw, so I want to look at that and strengthen it, kind of similar to how it was on earlier. And then at the same time, kind of look and see how many boards or committees someone should be allowed to surround, should we look into that and say, you know what, there should be a limiter, if you're on this, then maybe you shouldn't be on that, so it kind of coincided incidentally. And then three, is some sort of town hall activity for Carver kids. I've got one, I've got two that kind of were left behind in March, and the kids, they were stuck at home with nothing to do and schools up in the air, so I thought something just as basic and simple as, we put something on the website about, you know, a Carver reading program, so you fill out like title, author, and then you write why I liked this book, or if you're too small to write, you draw a picture of what the book was about. You bring it to the select board's office, and, you know, outside there's a little treasure chest filled with little prizes, so you bring in your paper, you put it in the box, and you take a prize. It's not a big deal, it's cheap, and it would just be something fun for kids to do, it'd give you something to do. Maybe on the website, you put a town scavenger hunt, and pick like five things, Carver Center, hey, go find this location, or what's this, I'll go on forever, see? But just like fun stuff that we can put on the website, that kids can do, that is just, you know, it shows the town cares about them, and just, yeah, so.
If you have ideas, I'm sure we can help you with those.
Yeah, just, just simple and basic, and it's not like they're going to be coming in the floodgates and stuff, you know, and we're worried about COVID, put some hand sanitizer and axe, and say, don't touch all the toys before you choose one, you know? So just something for the kids, and it's not a big giant thing, but I think, I think it could make a difference, and that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. Mr. Hoffman.
Mine was just to receive updates on the transfer station and the district to be on the agendas until the issue is resolved, which basically we're doing now, but I just wanted to make sure that was going to be an ongoing thing.
Yep, that was, that'd have been my intention anyway, but I'm glad you made it one of your, it's nice, nice to have the support, yeah, no, that's good.
Thank you.
Mr. Townsend.
Thank you. Mine was the library and the council on aging, and we've already spent a lot of time discussing that tonight, but I just, again, with the council on aging, I think it's important that we really try to work on a plan, even if it's a smaller opening at first and it's enlarged later, but I think we need to develop a plan sooner rather than later. And I appreciate your willingness to keep us updated.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have three things, I'll keep them short as well. The first one is video cameras at town hall. I just have a short statement I'm going to read on this topic. Last winter, due to a failing alarm system at town hall, that system was replaced by video monitoring cameras. Those entering, exiting, working, and conducting business in town hall have been subject to monitoring since that time. This was last winter. While this transition from alarm system to cameras may provide for effective security, my concern is that the installation of this video monitoring system was not shared with the select board or with other boards and committees. In addition, I believe that the public should be made aware that the building is being video monitored. Until quite recently, there was neither signage informing the public nor conspicuous cameras to provide proper notice to all who enter the building. As chair, I have asked the interim town administrator to make two changes. First, to ensure that proper signage is in place to inform the public, and second, to ensure that the current viewing access be maintained only by the police department and the director of operations and maintenance, and is not in any other town hall office. I believe this serves to satisfy public safety needs while making a reasonable effort to inform the public that they are being monitored. That's it. Hope it's not too much of a, everyone looks so stunned. I just think that's really important, the public, the public needs to know, and as soon as I brought it to Mr. Lafon's attention, the signs were up like the next day, and so I appreciate that. And it was less expensive than buying new cameras that are larger, which just seemed silly. I just, I just think it's very important for us to be as clear and open with the public as we can. We've already talked about my second issue as well, the library and council on aging, when they can reopen, under what circumstances, and then I'm going to defer to Mr. Lafon on this because we had a lot of back and forth about reviewing the select board code of conduct, and I think you came up with a good solution to this, Rick, if you want to talk to that.
Well, I wasn't prepared for this, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
But I think, I know you had raised some questions about some of the, I'm not, some of the language in it, and in my opinion, I think it's something that, you know, it's best if the board authorizes a member or members of the board to review it and bring it back to the full board. I just think that's much better form than, than either just bringing it out here in a meeting and hashing it out, I just think it makes more sense.
Right.
So that would be my recommendation.
So we can maybe have that as an agenda item in the future?
Yeah, certainly, certainly.
Something the board can think about. Okay, that's great. So?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you all.
Good night.